Good evening. My name is Marisa Bono, Chief Strategic Officer for Via Metropolitan Transit. O prima estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. Thank you for joining our live interactive telephone town hall as we host an open conversation about Via Metropolitan Transit and its plans for the future. This event and others will give us a chance to speak directly with you and answer as many of your questions as possible. For our phone participants tonight, we would like to invite you to watch the livestream by visiting keepsamoving.com. Just scroll down the streaming player toward the bottom of the page. Tonight, we're focusing our conversation on Via, our paratransit service known as Via Trans, and our community of people with disabilities here in San Antonio. With me this evening is a panel composed of three ladies who work tirelessly and passionately to ensure that our community is continually striving to be more accessible. We have with us here this evening Athalie Malone from the Via Board. Trustee Malone, who is visually impaired, has brought a much-needed and powerful perspective and insight to the agency since she started serving on the board. Jane Pacioni, who serves as the Managing Director of Collective Impact at the San Antonio Area Foundation, and Melanie Coffin, co-founder and Executive Director of Disability SA, a nonprofit organization that works to connect people with disabilities and their families to local resources, programs, and opportunities that promote independence and inclusion. We also have with us tonight on standby for questions from our riders with disabilities, Sylvia Castillo, Via's Manager of Paratransit Operations. So thank you all, thank you all of you for being here with us tonight. It's a real pleasure to see you and to be with you this evening.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, this is an interactive forum, and we'd love to hear from you. We'll be taking as many questions from participants as we possibly can live on this event. Otra vez, o prima estrella cero, estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. If you have a question, you can press star 3 on your phone keypad at any time, and you will be placed in line to speak with a member of our staff. After that, the next time you hear your name, you will be live on the call, and you'll be able to ask your question directly. If you're streaming the event on our website, just type your name and question below the streaming player. So let's get started. Trustee Malone, I'd like to begin with you. If you don't mind, tell us about your experiences as a Via customer, what Via Trans is and how it's used, and what led you to volunteer on the Via Board?
Good evening. I have been a customer of Via for over 40 years. I started when I was in high school, using Via to get back and forth for school, and then as time went on, I would also use it to get to work. Much more convenient, saved on gas. Thirteen years ago, I lost my vision. And since then, I have become a customer of Via Trans. Basically, what Via Trans is, is another option for those that are disabled to get back and forth door-to-door. It's a little bit more accessible in terms of elderly and disabled, instead of us having to take the bus and walk for those that really can't walk a long distance or they're not sure where they're going. I have, I use both. I use the bus system and Via Trans, because I'm still able to do that. So I use the bus mainly for shopping or to get back and forth if I have meetings and so forth. But I also use Via Trans to get me more to more designated areas that I need to be in.
And you've been a Via customer for 40 years. What led you to step up and serve on our board?
Basically, I noticed that the board did not have a full representation in terms of disabled, and also too, there were several factors in Via Trans that needed a little bit more attention than what they were getting. So I decided to go and volunteer and start working to get towards to being on the board.
Thank you for that. You know, you, through your personal experience, you brought up a great point, and that's many of our riders with disabilities use both the Via Trans service and then also the regular bus routes. And there's, I think there's a common misperception that riders with disabilities only use Via Trans, when in fact, many of our riders, if not most of our riders with disabilities, use both services. I, you know, we're going to use some terminology tonight, and for the listeners who are just joining us, I want to make sure that we're on the same page. When we say Via Trans, this is Via's paratransit service for riders who can't always take our regular bus service. You might hear tonight a reference to DNLA service or Do Not Leave Alone service. Via offers this service for customers who have severely limited awareness or decision-making skills and cannot travel on their own, and this service allows the customer to receive hand-to-hand service, meaning someone has to be with the customer upon being picked up, as well as being dropped off. And we also have a Will Call service. This allows customers flexibility when scheduling and not requiring an exact time for a return trip from a medical appointment or jury duty. So when customers are ready to be picked up from a doctor's appointment or, say, dialysis treatment, they can simply call Via Trans reservations to activate the return trip. That's called Will Call service. So, Trustee Malone, I have to say that your perspective as, not only as a Via rider, but a Via rider with disabilities, has just been invaluable on the board, and it's been a real pleasure to be on board at Via while you've been serving on the board. So thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
Melanie, Melanie, you just heard Trustee Malone talk about some of the obstacles that Via riders can sometimes face through telling her own personal experience. In your work, you're the Executive Director of Disability SA. How do you counsel clients who need transportation assistance?
So we've, we've been working with Athalie for the last three years and got to experience and be a part of that process of her advocacy and working towards getting into a place where she can make a difference. And we're thrilled when she decided to apply and got accepted or appointed onto the Via Board. And so one of the things that we do is make sure that people with disabilities know how to advocate for change and know how to advocate for themselves and the disability community through the platforms that are already present, like Citizens to Be Heard, through the Via Board meetings, or by joining transportation coalitions and advocacy groups, or by applying and getting appointed onto city council commissions and boards that help make planning decisions for the services that people with disabilities in our community need. So that's from the advocacy standpoint. And then just from actual deliverables, right, getting transportation services, we assist individuals with disabilities in getting connected with the right platforms for applying for paratransit services. We also encourage individuals who don't need specialized services to go ahead and utilize the general transportation routes, the traditional transportation routes of Via with the traditional buses, because they're reliable and efficient and are becoming more and more so, which helps move passengers from the Via paratransit services, making them more efficient in effect. And just connecting them if they don't, you know, qualify for Via Transit services and they need additional services, making sure that they connect with those other transportation resources in our community.
You know, one of the things that I love about your style of leadership, Melanie, and really the style of all of the panelists that we have tonight, Trustee Malone, Jane Pacioni from the San Antonio Area Foundation, is you really focus on empowering others, helping others access the resources they need, the resources that they're entitled to. I think it's incredibly powerful, because that's where you find true impact when addressing the obstacles that some of our families and some of our riders face. And you mentioned trying to encourage people like Trustee Malone to serve on boards, the Via Boards, city boards, county boards, and commissions. Well, I would like to add that Via has an Accessible Transit Advisory Committee, the ATAC. This is a committee that was formed by the Via Board of Trustees to study and review issues concerning the accessibility of Via programs and services. It includes five Via trustees, each of whom is a voting member, several Via staff who provide information and assistance, and meetings are typically held three to four times a year. It also includes seven community liaison members chosen for their knowledge and their experience about transportation issues which affect both riders with disabilities and our older American writers. And three of those, yes, please?
I was just going to say, Commissioner, trustee, sorry, Malone, has been an advocate in the community for many, many years. So we just facilitated as a cheerleader for her efforts, but we are there to help walk people through that process. So individuals who haven't been a part of advocacy in the community, who want to get involved and have a voice, we are there to help walk them step by step through that process so that they can find the application, fill out the application, know where to go and what to do, and so that's the resource that we're able to provide.
Absolutely. And, you know, when the board reactivated our Via Transit Community Council last year, which includes required representation for both the elderly and riders with disabilities, I know you were one of the people that I reached out to for suggestions for representation on that board. So again, thank you for that, for that work. Now Jane, you've had a significant history in working with mobility and people with disabilities. And as we at Via continue trying to improve services, what's on the forefront of conversations you're having about mobility and transit funding issues?
Well, Marisa, thank you so much for inviting me tonight, because you know I'm passionate about transportation. So over at the Area Foundation, I run the Salsa Collective Initiative, which means Successfully Aging and Living in San Antonio. And we, we have a transportation work group, and that work group is working on a one-call-one-click system for San Antonio. So right now, we've got Via doing the paratransit and regular lines, but for people outside of the service area that they can get Via Trans from, we have other providers, other nonprofits are filling the gaps and working hand-in-hand with Via. So we have those service providers over at the Area Foundation in Salsa, working on this one-call-one-click. So I'm really excited. It's in the planning stages, but I'm hoping it will be one number where our people with disabilities and older adults can call just one number, and the providers who give this service will be coordinated together. So a big efficiency for San Antonio. Other cities have it, we want it here too.
Are you, you said you're in the process of developing that, Jane?
We are, we're planning it. So we have a plan, so that's what we're working on in the work group. But there are so many things to get excited about in transportation in San Antonio. One of the things I'm excited about as a person with a mobility disability, I'm excited about the Via Link, Marisa. I love that idea. I hope it comes, I hope it goes all over the city in different pockets, because I think that's another thing people with disabilities can use, regular route, Via Link, and Via Trans, and really have a cornucopia of things that they can use to navigate the city. So I'm really excited about that. And I'm excited about Via's dedication to community, supporting the community transportation network that we have, so I'm really happy with that. Of course, at the end of this, I'm always going to say, funding is an issue. So we know that Via's been historically and chronically underfunded, and that needs to change.
Thank you for that. Now, for those of you, Jane just mentioned Via Link. For those of you who aren't familiar with Via Link, it's our mobility-on-demand service. This is a service we currently offer in the northeast sector of town in areas, it's an area where fixed route bus service is not always the most efficient option. And we, we have had great success with our Via Link On-Demand Service in the northeast zone. So we had, there previously, we had large buses on hour-long rotations, and they weren't really providing the type of service that the community needed. So we pulled those buses out, put the safe costs in other routes across the service area, and now there is a on-demand service similar to Rideshare, except the cost is the same as a Via bus fare. So it's a very cheap, efficient option, and
And accessible.
Cost-effective, accessible, cost-effective service option. And so we are looking at expanding that option to a zone in the northwest sector of the city. And our Keep SA Moving Plan, which you can find at keepsamoving.com, more information about that plan. But, you know, hopefully with additional funding, we'd like to expand that service to other zones throughout the city. So, would also like to add, well, you know what, we already, I just noticed, we have about 1,800 participants on the call this evening. Thanks for those of you who just joined us. So I want to go ahead and get to our first question tonight. And our first question comes from Jose. He submitted his question at keepsamoving.com. And Jose asks, "Not all people who are disabled have someone to help with things like filling out paperwork for free bus passes with Via. How can we get assistance?" Oh, well, you know, first of all, for those listening, there's always an option to visit the Via website, viainfo.net/via-trans. You can access the Via Trans Customer Guide. You can, there's a short video there about how to access the Via Trans service. There's a downloadable Via Trans application form. And then when it comes to accessing other services like free bus passes, the information is available there. And we also have a customer information and helpline, and that number is 210-362-2020. But Melanie, what are your thoughts about what you would do and how you would provide assistance for someone who was to call your nonprofit, Disability SA, saying that they needed help with obtaining free Via service?
So what we do at Disability SA, when somebody calls in with an inquiry about a resource or a service, so transportation, we would do, pull from our resource guides and our partnerships in the community, and so we would make sure that they get connected with an individual or at least a direct line. So if, I have never actually personally called Via, but if you have to go through options, we make that phone call, we figure out what buttons you need to push in order to get to a direct person to assist with whatever resource it is that you're looking for. And then we make sure that you connect, we make sure that your situation is resolved. If not, we look for other resources, and if, and we always follow up to make sure that everything has gone according to our hopes. We have other community partners that do case services, and so if that's what you need in order to get not only transportation but other services, then we help connect you with those organizations in town. So we are just kind of a central hub of information, connections, and networks that help you get and navigate the disability sector system, because it can be overwhelming and confusing, and people get tired of running around in circles, give up, and then they don't get the resources that they need. So it is our goal and ambition to make sure that we eliminate as many barriers to you accessing services as we possibly can.
Thank you for that. Trustee Malone, do you have any additional thoughts about what riders with disabilities can do when they need help completing forms, completing paperwork to access Via services?
Well, at this time, I know that it's kind of hard to come into the customer center because of COVID, but I know when it is not this difficult because of COVID, the reps there will help you fill out the applications and the forms made available to you to get this together. Also too, like Melanie said, there are several other areas, like the Division of Assisted Rehabilitative Services and so forth, that will help you with these things. But in time of COVID, it's very hard, because nobody wants to be face-to-face. That is unfortunate.
It sure is, but because so many people rely on our services to get to where they need to go, over 60% of our riders are below the poverty level, don't own vehicles, and rely on Via service. And I have to give a shout-out to our frontline workers at Via. The Customer Service Center has been running throughout the pandemic. Our operators have been in the field throughout the pandemic. Our maintenance crews have been out in the field throughout the pandemic to ensure, at their own risk, to ensure that our customers get the service they need. And we have pretty strict safety protocols to try to keep customers safe in our service centers, in our transit center. So I'd like to, we now have over 1,800 participants on the call. Thank you if you just joined us. I'd like to go now to one of our live callers, and this is a caller named Miguel. Miguel, go ahead, you're live.
Hi, yes, my name is Miguel. I was just calling because I rely on Via to get around. I'm disabled, I'm in a wheelchair. And I fully support the Keep SA Moving Plan, and I'm asking the public and especially the disabled community to join in voting yes for the transit in November election. We need to ensure that our disability community continues to have access to public consultation. That is why I'm, you know, I'm asking the community, and especially, like I said, the disabled community, to vote yes for the Keep SA Moving Plan in November.
Thank, thank you for that. Thank you for that, Miguel. So our caller just referenced the Keep SA Moving Plan. You can get more information at keepsamoving.com. It's Via's plan designed to provide better connection and better transit service for our community. And there is a ballot initiative on the, on the ballot in November. Our board passed, or, you know what, I have Trustee Malone here with us. Trustee Malone, would you like to talk about the actions that the board took and the November referendum?
Basically, we, excuse me, we passed the vote for a referendum for the November ballot, basically to regain the funding that we need. Historically, we were, historically, all transit systems in the state of Texas got a penny from the sales tax. Unfortunately, they voted in San Antonio to let us only use half a cent for the sales tax. And because of that, we have been underfunded for the last 40 years. This board decided that it was time for us to get some of that money back so we can do what we need to do to make Via better, not only for the riding, not only for the regular riding public, but for the disabled and Via Trans. So we passed the vote for November 3rd. We have now been put on the ballot after much work in the background to get it together. This is not a raising of the tax. We are not raising taxes. All we're doing is reallocating the money back to Via. We are just reallocating the money back to Via. We are not raising taxes.
Thank you for that, Trustee Malone. And as you've been seeing, I see we have some questions coming in about the other referendums on the ballot in November, and I just want to make clear, the Advanced Transportation District, the ATD, same, it's the same constitution as the Via Board, and the city council in the same month called for separate referendums to be placed on the ballot in the November general election. And so they're basically asking voters to consider initially shifting the 1.8 cent sales tax that Trustee Malone just referenced to workforce assistance and education programs that would be sponsored by the city, and then after four years, that tax would shift to Via in perpetuity. And again, that 1.8 cent portion is part of the 1 cent of local sales tax designed to be the only designated funding for public transit in Texas, of which, as Trustee Malone mentioned, Via has collected only half over the past 40 years. So thank you again to our caller. And again, this is a live interactive forum. We want to hear your questions. If you have a question, press star 3 on your keypad at any time to get in the queue to ask a question. A member of our staff will greet you, will collect your question, and if you hear your name again, it means you're live on the show, and you can interact, interact with our panelists. Again, press star 3 at any time.
Marisa?
Okay. Yes, oh, please, go ahead.
Sure. So I also want to invite and encourage anybody who's interested in getting involved in advocating for transportation issues and helping to improve transportation in our community, transportation options, and the planning around transportation, to visit our website at disabilitySA.org. And right under the announcement about tonight's town hall is a survey to get involved. It asks about your interest, and you can select transportation to allow us to help you to be that advocate voice in the San Antonio community. So disabilitySA.org, and just go down to the advocacy section of the front page and register your information, and we'll get you connected and, and help you to raise the voice of San Antonio.
Thank you for that. And I, I'm interested to see how many of our participants tonight, how closely our audiences connected to this issue. And so we'll go ahead and go to our first poll question tonight. And the question is, "Do you use or know anyone who uses Via Trans?" Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 for unsure. Do you use or do you know anyone who uses Via Trans? 1 for yes, 2 for no, 3 for unsure. And just do, you know, just doing a quick Via by the numbers. You know, we get a lot of questions about who Via riders are, and I, you know, I will say about 72% of our riders are employed. They usually work full-time for the most part. They use Via five to seven days a week and work at least one weekend day. As I mentioned before, 67% are below the federal poverty threshold. They earn less than $25,000 a year. About 60% have no personally-owned car in the household, and 81% have a high school diploma or a GED. Now, we have more than 16,000 persons with disabilities in the San Antonio area who have been approved to use our Via Trans service. But as we discussed earlier, many of our riders who use Via Trans also use our regular bus service, and we have many riders with disabilities who use our regular bus service but don't necessarily use Via Trans. But on, and in fiscal year 2019, the average weekday paratransit boardings were 4,000 a day. the average weekday paratransit boardings were 4,000 a day. And we, in the same year, fiscal year 2019, we had 1.1 million boardings total with an average on-time performance of 85%. And so I see we have the results of our poll here. And the question was, do you or someone you know use Via Trans? And 65% of our participants tonight, we have over 1,800 participants with us tonight, 65% of you say that either you or someone you know uses Via Trans. 12% said no and 20% said unsure. And now Jane, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of some very difficult economic times. Based on your work and your conversations with the different groups and the folks that you work with, what are your thoughts about whether or not there will be an increased reliance on Via Trans coming into the next two or three years?
I think there's going to be an increase for Via Trans, but also the community transportation providers. It's, it's, it's going to go up. Our city is growing regardless of the pandemic. We're growing and we need solutions to make sure people with disabilities and older adults can navigate the city as they need to. So definitely it's going to increase. Our transportation providers are saying the same things. And that's why we're really looking at this one call, one click system. We think it will be much more efficient for the riders. So for example, right now, we've got Pressa and Nisa and Riconect Texas and Grasp, all community providers out there in different sectors of the community. And they all have different applications, different telephone numbers. And if we can just get the providers linked into one application, one telephone number, we'll be making great leaps. But what I think we're seeing tonight is people are interested in transportation. Our disability community is on the move and that's just good news.
Thank you for that. That was Jane.
I wish it was a Chinese.
Absolutely. So I just want to make sure we have three powerful advocates and women on the call with us tonight. Just wanted to make sure that folks know that was Jane Pacioni, who serves as the Managing Director of Collective Impact at the San Antonio Area Foundation. And we also have Melanie Cawthon. She's the Executive Director of Disability SA. Go ahead, Melanie. What were you going to say?
I just wanted to, once again, you gave a shout out to your bus service providers. And I want to give a shout out to Via as a whole because they are at the leadership table and the planning table for that one call, one click. So even as a transportation provider, they are also just a huge advocate for better transportation in and of itself in our community. And Via is definitely on the side of the people that they serve. And I just wanted to really hone in on that point because you guys have just jumped through hoops and loops to make sure that transportation remains consistent throughout the pandemic. You are on the forefront of leading our community forward in transportation. And I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate that. We actually have, I'm going to go to another one of our live participants right now. We actually have a call that came in, no, it's a question that came in on Facebook Live. The question was from Ryan. And he wants to know, how will the future 1-8 cent tax Via will acquire, serve the disabled community? Thank you for that question, Ryan. Ryan is referring to a referendum that the ATD or the Via Board put on the November ballot that would reallocate the 1-8 cent sales tax to Via in the year 2026, if approved by voters in November. And trustee Malone, Ryan wants to know, how will the future 1-8 cent tax Via will acquire, serve the disabled community? Would you like to tackle that question first?
Yeah. Basically, what this will allow us to do is improve not only on-time service, but the frequency. Instead of 30 minutes, it will now be 15. Instead of 12, it would now go down to 10 minutes. We will make sure that the the routes are more better accommodating in terms of if we have to bring two routes together to service the area better, that's what has to be done. It will also look at mainly the core. Inside of 410, we will push service more in the core so people can get back and forth to work. Also look at mobility on demand. The Via Link in the Northeast, looking at it in the Northwest and several other places, mobility on demand so that those people can come in, connect with a transit area and then take the bus from there. Also looking at innovation, meaning the new apps that E-Via is putting out now. Apps for finding your schedule, apps for downloading your tickets, apps for being able to pay instead of having to use money or tickets. Also innovation in terms of selecting your buses and setting up your ride to make it more possible to be where you have to be. With it, instead of a 90-minute timeline, now down to maybe 30 minutes or 45 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Malone. The Keep SA Moving Plan is designed to provide certain benefits. It's designed to maintain the essential service that we offer now, bus, van, Via Link, but also distribute resources to meet the community demand in more innovative ways. So that includes increasing frequency and more direct weekend service in our core bus service and also expanding our mobility on-demand service in areas where fixed route bus service is not always the most efficient option. And the plan is designed to create more cost-effective service options and more efficient options for Via customers with shorter wait times. And frankly, better connections to job centers, retail centers, health service centers, like trustee Malone said, focusing on people who rely on transit to get them where they need to go. So I'm going to go ahead and go to our next poll question now. It looks like we have over 1,800 participants with us tonight. Thank you for joining us if you just joined us. The question is, this is, again, this is an interactive forum. So please let us know what you think. It's, and the question is, because of the impact of the COVID-19 health situation on many people's personal finances, maintaining the Via public transit system will be needed more than ever. Press one if you agree, press two if you disagree, and press three if you're unsure. Again, the question is, because of the impact of the COVID-19 health situation on many people's personal finances, maintaining the Via public transit system will be needed more than ever. Press one if you agree, press two if you disagree, and press three if you're unsure. And while we tally up the results from that poll question, I'd like to go ahead and go to another one of our live callers. Jessie, go ahead. You're live.
I would like to know if a bus that I catch, the 20 bus that I catch on Saturday nights, if it could be the bus, the 20 leaves the Brooks Transit Center at 9:15. I wonder if it could leave three minutes later? Because I catch the 552 at Pickwell and Southeast Military going toward South New Braunfels. And sometimes I'm able to make it and catch the 20. And sometimes I'm on the, I see the 20 pass by when I'm still on the, on the 552 and I see it like a block away and going by. And I said, oh, if I could have just had one more minute, I could have made it.
Oh, Jessie, you're describing something that we hear so frequently from our riders. And that is, you know, a constant frustration with all of the connections that people who rely on transit have to make. If, you know, if the schedule's off by just a few minutes, you miss that connection. And that's why in our Keep SA Moving Plan, we want to create more direct crosstown routes so that you won't have to connect as many buses to get to where you need to go and so you won't have to wait as long and so that your trip won't be as long. And unfortunately, the reality is for a lot of our low-wage workers, especially the workers who work at night, like our caller Jessie just said he did, working off hours. We recognize that we just haven't been able to provide the type of frequency that you need. And I think, you know, that was one of the reasons that the board wanted to put the referendum on the ballot of November. Our Keep SA Moving Plan, if funded with additional funding, is designed to create better frequency and more direct routes for our riders, riders like you, Jessie. So thank you for that. Thank you for that comment. I'd like to go ahead and go now to the results of our poll. The question was, because of the impact of the COVID-19 health situation on many people's personal finances, maintaining the Via public transit system will be needed more than ever. And 90% of our participants tonight agree with that statement. Only 1% disagreed and 9% were unsure. Jane, what would your response have been to that question? What are your thoughts on that question?
I would have gone with the first one, the majority. I think it's, moving forward, we have such a great opportunity right now to change the face of transportation in San Antonio. It's exciting times. And I know, being a person with a disability, it's always like we're coming from behind often. And this is where we can get in front. And it makes, it warms my heart to know we've got so many people on the line that are taking this serious for the disability community. So I'm excited and good things are going to happen. But we need to get out there and advocate for what we need.
Thank you for that. Melanie, any thoughts?
Yep, I would be number one as well with the majority. And just looking at what other communities have been able to do with that 1 cent and knowing that Via has been recognized and awarded for doing the very most with the very least, just imagine what they could do with a little bit more. Granted, we don't get the full cent with this 1-8 cent tax raise, but, I'm sorry. And just to clarify, that's not a raise in taxes. It's a raise in funding to Via. Just what they've been able to do with so little. I'm looking forward to what we're able to do with just a little bit more.
Thank you for that. You know, I'm seeing a lot of questions coming in about expanding Via Trans services. And we actually have with us on standby tonight, Via's Manager of Paratransit Services, Sylvia Castillo. Sylvia Castillo, I'm going to go ahead and bring you live now. Are you there with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone.
Hi. It's great to have, it's great to have you with us tonight, Sylvia. Thank you for joining us. So I'm seeing lots of questions coming in about Via's plans to expand Via Trans services. What would your response be to those questions?
Well, at this point in time, we are currently, it's not being looked at because we're grappling with COVID. And so once we hopefully get back to normal, then we can start addressing those questions. The three-quarter mile parameter is set by Via policy. So it would be up to the Via Board to take this issue up because it does have implications in terms of budgetary and policy. So they would have to weigh in on that.
Thank you for that. And thank you for that, Sylvia. You know, the Keep SA Moving Plan has, you know, if funded, is designed to expand mobility on-demand options, not just in the Northeast or the Northwest part of town, but throughout the city. Jane, you mentioned earlier that you were excited about Via Link, our mobility on-demand option that Via would like to expand. Can you tell us a little bit about how Via Link serves people with disabilities?
Well, it would be, I have a wheelchair, so I can't use Uber, for example. This is like an Uber-like type of service. So I can call from my house on my phone or my, or on the computer and book a ride. And that ride, that accessible ride will come to my house, not in two or three hours, shortly, quickly. And I was excited the first time I heard about Via Link. I'm like, wow, I want that in my side of town. I hope it goes well. And it sounds like it has. So this gives people with disabilities, especially mobility issues, who can't use things like regular taxi cabs that aren't accessible or Uber-like vehicles. This gives them that on-demand option to go within a certain area, of course. But I think it's exciting and I think it's another thing that is completely accessible and something that would be, I would use for sure.
Thank you for that. Just want to remind all of our participants tonight that if you have Via Trans eligibility, you can ride the bus for free. So when we talk about expanding general bus service and making it more frequent, that is essentially going to expand service for our riders with disabilities who are still able to use our regular bus service. And with the expansion of routes in our service area, that simultaneously would expand the services we're able to offer through Via Trans, our paratransit service. So I was.
Marisa.
Yeah. Oh, oh, we got some interest in that. So trustee Malone, let's start with you and then Melanie, you can follow up.
To be perfectly clear also too, this would be also a greater help to the disabled community because one of the things why the Via Trans is there is to give the disability community independence. With the improvement of the Via service, regular Via service in the core, you now give more opportunities to disabled folks to get around more, to get to a job, to get to their doctor, wherever they need. And one of the things that is most important to the disabled community is our independence. We don't want to always be relying on others or waiting for others. So if we can have something that is there for us and is reliable for our independence, that makes it ever so much better.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's a great point. And Melanie, before you follow up on that, just want to remind everyone that the Keep SA Moving Plan is designed to increase the area served by Via by 30%. So that will essentially serve as expanded service for our riders with disabilities. Melanie, go ahead. I'm going to give you a time limit here because we're getting close. So let's, your thoughts in 30 seconds or less.
30 seconds. So while Via has, while Via has gone to a lot of trouble to make sure all of their stops are accessible, sometimes you might find a gap in a sidewalk or a crack in the sidewalk, a busted sidewalk or trash cans that are around that belong to the city. And that might prevent you from being able to ride the traditional line. So I want to encourage people to learn about and know about the 311 app where you can report those barriers. Let's get those barriers removed so that you can utilize the efficient, effective, affordable system of the traditional bus line if you're able to ride the traditional bus system.
Thank you for that. You know, I want to reiterate that Via doesn't own or maintain the sidewalks around our bus stops, unfortunately. But we definitely do our best to work with our 14-member cities and Bear County. and Bear County to ensure access for riders with disabilities to our bus stops. But if you're a rider with disability, you have an issue with the sidewalk in accessibility, please don't hesitate to call us and let us know at 210-362-2020. And if you want to report a sidewalk issue, call the city at 311. So I've got time for one last caller. I'm going to try to squeeze you in. Michael, go ahead, you're live. Let's make it fast and see if we can get a response for you. Go ahead, Michael.
I'm a caregiver for several folks who need extra assistance. And the VIA trans and VIA system is absolutely amazing. Interacting with the drivers and providing assistance, the level of care and assistance is just wonderful. And speaking about the necessary for independence for people who need help, that is absolutely the takeaway from this evening. San Antonio ought to be very proud, VIA ought to be very proud.
Michael, wow. I mean, do we, that was a perfect ending. Thank you for that. We, you know, I've been with VIA for about a year now. It's been so inspiring to work at a place where every single team member is so committed to service and making transit better and making our service better for the people of San Antonio. And of course, it's been especially inspiring during the course of this pandemic. And thank you for that comment, Michael. And unfortunately, we have come to the end of our live event this evening. We appreciate you taking the time to join this conversation. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you directly and answer your questions. I want to thank again our panelists, Trustee Malone with the VIA board. We have Jane Pacioni with the San Antonio Area Foundation and Melanie Coffin, Executive Director of Disability SA. Thank you again for joining us tonight. Now, if you were not able to get your question answered this evening, you can leave a voicemail after this event. Just stay on the call after we end and you're going to be transferred into our private voicemail system. You can also send us an email at keepasamoving@viainfo.net or call us at the office, 210-517-4715. We're going to host more of these events in the future to keep you informed on what we're working on, get your feedback, and get your questions answered and provide you with important updates. Thank you again and have a good evening.